Hello Charlie?
Howdy.
How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Ready?
Yep.
Meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is back on the east wall. If anyone needs to read that, we'll have roll call.
Please don't do that. That unlocks it. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then a quit.
Just go ahead and ask him to be quiet.
Oh. Anyway, roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Alright, if we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just wanna remind all that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. Remember whoever is recognized to speak, be sure to come forward. We'll need you to state your name for the record and spell it as well for the clerk so she can type her minutes accordingly. Remember, no inappropriate language. Also, we need to check our cellphones, be sure they're off or on silent. Let me remind the commissioners also to speak into the microphone the best you can so that we can be heard on the recording. We hope this agenda is fairly short. I don't plan to take a recess midway because I'm hoping and assuming this meeting will be short. And certainly, we have Mr. Ocean here again this evening. Attorney from the law firm and that he's here to help us through the meeting and with our civic affairs. I think, I think that's all for announcements. Let me go to approval of agenda and consider any modifications. Kelly, do you have anything?
I don't have anything other than I'm going to present for Heather in the, once you get into the Board of Equalization.
Alright. Any other concerns about the agenda?
Move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Remember, the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. I don't believe we have anything scheduled tonight for executive session, but we always want to remind people that it's a possibility if we deem it necessary. The next item is a consent count, a consent agenda, minutes, remittances. You can see the list, a number of things that are part of the consent agenda. These items are intended to be approved by one action unless someone wants to consider them separately.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll move on to Board of Equalization. We'll need a motion to go into a Board of Equalization.
I've moved that we go into the Board of Equalization.
Your second? I have a motion and a second to go in Board of Equalization. All, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, motion's carried. The first item is discuss and consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for the Panhandle Daycare Center in Scottspluff. And I understand Kelly's going to be-
Are you okay if I just go for you?
Yeah. Kelly's gonna be speaking on behalf of Heather.
So it's for the Panhandle Daycare Center. They use this vehicle to go grocery shopping, running errands for the center, transportation for children to and from school, other educational activities. They have previously been exempt. Tax loss is twenty-six dollars and sixty cents, and she recommends approval.
Are there any questions or discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion except as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle exemption. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, you have five yeses.
Motion's carried. The next one is receive tax list corrections. Believe we received those in our packet. And I believe there were two of them. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I have moved to accept the tax list corrections.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the tax list corrections or receive them. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, you have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Do we have a motion to go out of Board of Equalization?
So do.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to go out of Board of Equalization. Let's go ahead and vote.
And you have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Moving right along to general agenda items. The next items are personnel policy items. Jean, I suppose that Jean's the chairperson of that group. And Ms. Lisa's here too. Who's, who's gonna talk about these items?
Oh, I'll let Jean say it.
Okay, Lisa, go ahead, sorry.
It's like, hey, I'm gonna delegate. Alright, I think we're bringing forward what four policies?
Think so.
Ah, one is new and two others are updated. There's some verbiage changes in the last one. Commissioners asked us to bring us, bring you back a proposal regarding smoking, vaping policies. So, first one, this is the new policy. We would name it number seventeen hundred dot oh oh four, Scottspluff County Distracted Driving Policy. So, we had a presentation, let's say time flies. This was probably September, October, a gentleman come and present a couple of different times to the roadspeople. We had sheriff deputies in here and any, anybody that drives our vehicles to sit through this presentation put on by, by this gentleman from- And I can't remember what, an association through the state. And anyways, it was well received. He recommended a distracted driving policy should be put in place. So we've been working on this and we've sat through a couple of different Personnel Board meetings discussing this topic. So here's how it reads. Scottspluff County Distracted Driving Policy. And this is for the employees who drive our vehicles or our, the equipment of the county to read, review, and sign off. Please read the distracted driving policy, sign and return to Human Resources. In order to increase employee safety and eliminate unnecessary risk behind the wheel, Scottspluff County has enacted a distracted driving policy effective, effective it would be today if you approved this. We are committed to ending the epidemic of distracted driving and have created the following rules, which, which apply to any employee operating a county vehicle or using a county issued cellphone while operating a personal vehicle. So, county employees may not use a handheld cellphone while operating a vehicle, whether the vehicle is in motion or stopped at a traffic light. This includes, but is not limited to answering or making phone calls, engaging in phone conversations, and reading or responding to emails, instant messages, or text messages. If county employees need to use their phones, they must pull over safely to the side of the road or another safe location. Additionally, county employees are required to turn cellphones off or put them in silent or vibrate before starting the county motorized vehicle equipment. Consider modifying voicemail greetings to indicate that you are unavailable to answer calls or return messages while driving. Inform clients, associates, and business partners of this policy as an explanation of why calls may not be returned immediately. If caught in violation, progressive discipline will be applied dependent on the severity of the situation as determined by the department head. Injury, accidents, or, and/or property damage will review, be reviewed by the county attorney, department head, safety director, and management accountant. Sheriff depart, okay, and then in double quotes, Sheriff Department personnel will refer to their own department standard operating procedure F dash zero zero seven zero, Cellular Telephone Policy Agency and Personnel. And then goes on to say, I acknowledge that I have received a written copy of the distracted driving policy, that I fully understand the terms of this policy, that I agree to abide by these terms, and that I am willing to accept the consequences of failing to follow the policy.
Lisa?
Yes.
Actually, Ray, this is for you. Does this differ much with what your policy says as far as the Sheriff's Department? With cellphone usage and that? All, all of your vehicles are capable of doing that? Yeah, okay.
They Bluetooth link. I, I have the sheriff's policy. He provided it to me.
That's okay, I got it.
We recognize early on that their situation was different.
Yeah.
And that they had different things that they needed to be able to do. I mean, they have sometimes computers in their car. I mean, they're distracted by several things sometimes and they have policies to deal with that.
The only thing I would ask, does this policy supersede what they do or vice versa?
Well, that's why I put it as, Sheriff Department personnel refer to their own policy within their department.
Okay, so whatever, whatever happens if they're, whatever, and something happens, it goes back to their policy and not this one. Okay, thank you.
That's the intent.
Does this contain equipment as well as-
Right.
Pickup trucks, trail graders, it's everything?
Yes.
I personally think it's a good policy. It's well-written, easy to understand. And I, I move that we approve this policy.
Is there a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We can discuss, yeah, I wanna discuss it on this. It says, any employee operating a county vehicle or using a county issued cellphone. So what if they're using a private cellphone? Does it cover it?
Yeah, I think it covers it. If you're in a county vehicle using a private cellphone, this covers that. I guess what I'm wondering is if you're using a county cellphone while you're in your private vehicle, you're also bound by this. That's the way I interpret it.
Say that again.
So, it covers if you're in a county vehicle and on your private cellphone.
Doesn't say that.
This, this policy covers that. Yeah. I think it, I think it covers, from my, the way I attribute it.
Where do you see private cellphone? If they would've left county cellphone, or they would just say cellphone, it would cover it. If you've got a county issued phone, no, I don't think it covers private.
No, because it says or. Because it says or.
Let's just ask-
Or county issued cellphone.
And your personal-
And your private.
Does it say personal cellphone? All you use up, so you just, after the comma, there. If the county issued phone, you can't use it for a fight. We're just singling out county issued cellphones.
Well, that's for that last sentence.
Well, yeah, because it's, yeah. It's a county issued cellphone while operating a personal vehicle. So if you have a wreck and you're on a county, a call with your county phone, then you're in violation of this policy. What if you're on a private phone? I don't think, I don't think that makes a difference. I mean, as far, as far as that first paragraph is concerned.
Jason, I guess I'd refer to you and it certainly, are you seeing any problem with that language, the way it is?
I think you're, I think you're covered with the or, which, you know, the first part of any employee operating a county vehicle. So, and that would be, to me, regardless of what type of cellphone they're using. And then the second part-
It's specific about the cellphone, right, or it's specific?
After the or.
Or.
Or county.
That's, that's creating a different situation.
Two separate situations.
Can you go to the bullet points after that paragraph though? Don't you get it further detail, right there? It doesn't define personal or cell, of county issued.
Well, it, it does in the last sentence.
So that says cellphones.
Yeah.
Then the next part.
So I guess, Jason, I'm asking you. Do you have any concerns with this language?
Or maybe, or using a cellphone while operating a personal vehicle on county business. Isn't that?
I think it's fine the way it is.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I think that if there's any, you know, there could be a motion to, to address this if, if, if you feel that a change is, is necessary. But I think with the or, um, I think you're covered.
I don't see how the or makes you covered when it doesn't say private phone. Or if you took out the county cellphone, just made it cellphone. Then it's every cellphone you got.
Because you can't tell me-
Right now, you're specific to a county cellphone.
You can't tell me I'm using my personal cellphone.
That's right.
Right.
That's what separates out.
Right. I can't use a county owned cellphone in my personal vehicle. I think the first part covers regardless of cellphone, you can't use a county vehicle or a personal cellphone. It's, it's talking about this earlier. I think the intent is to, to bind the employee with the idea that it is some form of county property, either the county vehicle or the county phone to-
There you go.
That's how, that's where we have authority or can have authority is if, if they're using something of the county's. If they're using all their own personal stuff, we really don't show authority.
Then it would just be under the state statute that covers distracted.
Can the county be liable if I'm driving my car, driving for a NACO thing like that? And I crashed my car on the way, can it be more comp if I'm driving my own car? And not claiming liability or are we gonna pay the car?
Yeah, then you're gonna get into, you know, the authorized work business to try to get under corporate's car.
But that could technically come back to be an issue if, if that really was using your own personal vehicle and you're on your own personal cellphone, yet you're driving to a NACO conference. And, yeah.
Would, would it be better if we just eliminated the last part of that last sentence, which apply to any employee operating a county vehicle or using a, or, or just a county vehicle, period? And then forget about the county issued cellphone while operating a personal vehicle. Cause I, I, I think you're gonna be hard pressed if, if you've got your county phone or whatever. And let's say, Kurt, you've got, do you have a county phone, Kurt? Okay, so it's basically, yeah, that's- I, I think, I think you can what-if it all, all night long, you know? I think that needs to come to any cellphone. Just, just cellphone use while operating the county vehicle. That's what the whole thing is. All it needs to say, really. Yeah. Very simple. It, did what? There would be liability on yours, I'm assuming. I don't think it would come back on the county. It says no cellphone. But I mean, she's in her personal vehicle. She's on her personal- Yeah.
Someone called you, or someone called an employee on their county phone because it was probably county business.
Well, I don't know, we're really splitting hairs. Then we need to put a cellphone policy together and not just a driving. You need a cellphone. I think we're making her harder than what it really is.
Yeah, I think it's very simple the way it's worded.
I think this is-
I would move approval of the-
We've got a motion and a second.
We've got a motion and a second.
Motion and a second for this, for this.
Right.
I, um-
Well, I would only say that, um, uh, if we need to-
Fine to.
Clean up the language, um, um, either prior to really approving it or we can do it after. We can still, as with many of these policies, they get tweaked a little as we go sometimes. And, uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to passing it as it is. And then we can still tweak it as we go. And Jason, if you wanna review it any further, you can. But this policy came from the other organization.
Yeah.
And wasn't NERMA involved somewhat with this too?
I don't think NERMA was necessarily, but they could've been associated with-
I-
Nebraska Safety.
I'm okay with, except for that last part of the first, where it says-
That's right.
County issued cellphone while operating a personal vehicle. I think left that out. It should just say cellphone. Just cellphone, period. And I'd be good with it. So you got a voter grade? Then we have to send it back. We have to send it back. Then we get a change. I mean, that's up to those guys.
Or you leave it and then you find two. Cause yeah, this is the second time we've, we've all need to get to what, April?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Jean, I just go back to your comment. Are you, are you concerned about having a county cellphone in a private vehicle and something happened? Would that, is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah. Yeah, that's kinda what Jason said too. So you're talking county, county property.
County could be liable if you have an accident.
I'm transacting county business on a county cellphone in my personal vehicle. And I shouldn't be while I'm driving. Correct. But if I am, then I would be in violation of-
Whether it's a personal or a county phone, you shouldn't be on it while you're driving.
We shouldn't, but you're not gonna tell me that I can't use my cellphone in my own car. But if I'm on my personal cellphone in my personal vehicle, I don't know that there's liability on the part of the county. If I'm on my personal cellphone in my personal vehicle, traveling to a car for a meeting, you know, there might be an argument for, or comp or something like that. But I don't know that there would be an argument for liability if I get wrecked.
I'm, I'm fine with le, just leave it as it is. That way we don't have-
Well, and, and I think it's a, a, a good point that we haven't always had an attorney available to us to review these items. But the best time to have them review them is really before it comes to this meeting. And so in the future, since we do have them now more readily available to us, let's try and let them, um,
We talked about it earlier.
Review them, and maybe you already have reviewed, I mean, um, some of this, but specifically ask them, giving them an opportunity to give their blessing. Because if, if he comes here and says, I have reviewed it and I agree with the policy as it's written, then it'll, I think it'll mean quite a bit to the rest of us.
Yes, so Jason, you did review it. He and I spoke about this too.
Okay.
Would you say you agree with how it was written? That's the first thing he said.
Yeah, he, he is.
There's a problem, that's-
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I would call for the question.
No, you're not. No, and to me, I think the primary issue is trying to tie the county to the policy to make it binding on employees, whether it's a, it's, it's a county provided vehicle or a county provided cellphone versus the concerns about personal time and personal-
Their action ought to be the same.
I think that's the intent of this, the Safety Council's policy.
By having, by having that word county issued cellphone, there is a loophole as big as a bucket there as far as I can see. If I was an attorney, I guarantee I'd shred that. I would, you would be.
Or, yeah. Yeah. Alright, so the motion is, is to accept or pass this the way it is written. Any other discussion? Oh, we've had call for the questions, so let's go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses, one name being Reisig.
Okay, so, motion's carried. And if, at any point in time, um, one of the commissioners or Mr. Ocean feels that we need to tweak some language to make it better or more appropriate, then we can always do that. And so Jason, I would only say if you have anything towards that regard, I think it has to go through the Personnel Policy Board, but we can sure do that. Alright, thanks.
Yes, I can make sure directly ask. This is what's coming up, so you see it like a week before. But it wasn't his package, so he knew it was there.
Right, and so I think that's what's important is that we try and make sure that any of these items that could be legally controversial, that they get ran through.
Can I ask a question before you go on? Because I did talk to Jason about your other concern regarding the role of elected officials in regards to the Personnel Manual. Did you two talk?
We did talk today.
So he knows what you're expecting to see? Cause you were saying, well, maybe we could get him to write an opinion. Because I came up with it again at the Personnel Board.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about, but no, we didn't talk about that.
Oh, so I would ask that you put it in, make sure he's aware of what you wanna know so we have it in writing.
Yeah, and I don't even, even remember now what the question was, but-
And it had to do with this policy. Remember, we were going through, who should be notified? Who should be making the decisions? On how, on reviewing property damage and such. I mean, I had added safety director and myself. Important to have the department head, obviously, with the county attorney.
Yeah, that paragraph is where we had some, quite a bit of discussion.
We had, yes.
Okay.
And you were like wanting-
I'll try and rethink that and go with Jason with a phone call.
Thank you. Okay.
Alright, so let's go to the next one, the Policy thirty-four hundred, timekeeping. Did we vote?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
It passed one to one.
Yeah.
Alright, timekeeping. This is one of these situations where we had the verbiage in there. We're just tweaking verbiage. It's not really changing the whole intent of the policy. So I'll start from the beginning. Timekeeping, thirty-four hundred. Compensable work time is defined as any time spent by an employee performing duties or assignments directly relating to employment discussed with county, as defined by the Fair Labor Standards Act of the FLSA. Unless otherwise exempt, each employee is required to record all hours of compensable work. The basic record of compensable hours worked required for each employee is time in, time out. Specifically logged regular overtime, vacation, sick, holiday, and other hours daily. This record of compensable hours must be recorded daily by each employee during the pay period using the Time Clock Plus application. Three methods of accessing the TCP application are available for Scottspluff County employees. There's WebX on the web access on the employee's desktop, mobile phone, access utilizing the TCP application. You have, you must have superpo, supervisor approval to have this app on your phone along with GPS access. Time clock, physical locations of detention center, roads department, and transit bus. Revised twelve five twenty twenty two. Okay, specific policies governing the use of the payroll timesheets and payroll claims. Each employee is responsible for his or her own time recording within the- Each employee is responsible for his or her own time recording within the TCP software or similar timekeeping software. The red is what's changing. Accuracy and verification are required by the employee and supervisor within the TCP application. And number two, the employee and the elected appointed official or department supervisor must review. And sign the time report provided by the time clock sof- software each pay period. This is the data that will be exported to the payroll software application. Elected and appointed official must sign the payroll claim confirming the accuracy of hours worked prior to being submitted to the clerk's office payroll coordinator. And signed timesheets must be kept for five years by the elected appointed official supervising employee. So, I think that's all that changed, we had some discussion regarding how long we keep timesheets and I. I sent out record retention, I believe five years was, or longer, was appropriate per the state statutes. And anyway, like I said, this is mostly just clarifying, maybe. Updating some of the verbiage of the policy.
Lisa on item, item one on that?
Yes.
I think we're tying the supervisor down too much, I mean, like Roadbridge, if they got fifty people, if he's gotta look at everybody's. I think it, the way it should be, the way in my mind, the way we do it in our business, the employee should be responsible for his own time. But may be adjusted by the supervisor, but.
Okay, and Russ, for your clarification, it's the foreman that oversee their group of people, so it isn't Steve trying to do thirty-five people, it's.
Each foreman does their group, but, but doesn't Steve review all of those, all those thirty-five?
Nope, not necessarily.
But he does, but he has to do the supervisor's, he would do the four, he would do the four plus the office skeleton.
Yeah, he, he has to sign the payroll sheet that goes to the.
But what I'm seeing is though.
To the clerk's office.
Even if they have ten people under them, you're making the supervisor responsible because that guy came in late, the way it reads. Be a lot better if, if it was just the employee that was responsible for his hours, but could be adjusted by the supervisor.
Well.
That way you take the re- otherwise, you know, you wouldn't wanna be, I wouldn't wanna be responsible for ten guys, because we get them that don't punch out, so they call us at ten o'clock and I go, hey, I'm trying to punch out.
Okay.
So we gotta make the adjustments, but I'm not, I don't wanna be responsible for that. But we make the adjustment. In time clock, you have to go in, you're waiting for your hours, who's the supervisor? Supervisor can change it. They can change it, but they also have to approve.
Right, that's correct.
So I put my dispatchers, verify the driver's hours, and then I have to do all my dispatchers and my office staff's hours.
So then at least what you're saying.
They have to put theirs, and then I have to approve all their supervisors.
But you're not gonna be going over the drivers', um, hour by hour by hour, because you know it's already been done by your dispatcher. You're gonna be scanning it.
And, and he gets the opportunity to say, well, all of a sudden, suddenly being paid an extra forty hours more than everybody else, he's like, there's a problem. He can go and say, somebody didn't do their job.
I still have to go there hours when I have a long spreadsheet and he's like, somebody's hours they're back on the office. Well, yeah, that's the way we do, we can tell them, you know, the long and short, you know, either the question out or didn't punch it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, but, no, we kinda have to have some supervisor, it, it's pretty seamless, I mean, it's not like they have to spend lots and lots of time, I can go through and just see. Eight, 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 know that I'm, my person's pretty close, so I assume that's what these guys do too.
I would, I would move for approval of the timekeeping.
I'll, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yassos.
Alright, motions carried, we'll go to the next item, Personnel Policy thirteen point one hundred, Public Funds for Conferences, Training and Meetings.
Okay, and this is under the supervisor section of the policy. Couple little tweaks to this policy, and I won't go through and read all the, all the verbiage unless you want me to, but, or I'll just go down to where the change is. Um, the following are authorized expenses which will be paid or reimbursed, uh, when attending conferences, training, working, work-related meetings, okay? Registration fees, tuition costs, fees or charges for participation. I wanna take out tuition costs, just take it out of there, cause I had someone asking me about reimbursement of their college tuition and like, the county cannot afford to pay for someone through college. So don't even confuse the verbiage, and, cause I have been asked that. So, that was what that's all about, just saying registration fees, fees or charges for participation in your conference. And then rolling down under lodging and expenses, lodging, expenses occurred for actual lodging costs appropriate to the purpose of the trip, the trip will be paid or reimbursed. Direct billing to the county shall be used when possible. It is expected the employee will provide the lodging facility information to make the expense tax exempt. The county's clerk's office may be contacted for information on county tax numbers and references for direct billing requests. What we would, wanted to add here was review the US gen- US general services. So it's tr- change that comma to a period? Yeah, I think so, General Services Administration rates on website, www.gsa.gov for government rates at the location visiting and ask the motel to accommodate. And this is a spec- a lot, um, a website Sheriff Overman was. Sharing with us here for the last couple of months that you can go and punch in your location you're visiting and see what the standard government rate is. Which is in Carney, it's like ninety-five dollars, where, you know, we, we stay at the locations where our conferences at are, which is still allowable. It, they don't come down to ninety-five, they go with the block rate and I think part of our fee to stay at the Kram Plaza is to also probably part of the facility cost in my mind, but. So they block out rooms there, anyway. As we were trying to think of a way to add in here, if you stay at the location where your conference is, that is also allowed, we thought it was there, it's not, we just didn't come up with good verbiage to add it at this point, but. Wanted to put in there.
And at this point, it just says review. Um, review it, have it, give you an idea as to what the government rate should be.
Yeah, exactly, and actually we said, Darla Simpson just went to Lincoln last week and she told us at our meeting. That the Cornhusker Hotel accepted the GSA rate, so. You know, and keeping the taxes off is very important, I think, so. That's the updates on this policy.
Are we still fifty dollar a day for per diem?
Yes.
Was there any talk about increasing that due to inflation, I think that was twenty nineteen when you looked at it or twenty twenty?
Mm-hmm, and before that, it was like nineteen seventy-nine.
Yeah.
So, we only do it every thirty years, Charlie, sorry.
It, it was not talked about, but if you want that part of, on the agenda for next, our next meeting.
We can discuss it, and the GSA website also provides meal rates at your respective location.
We go with the federal reimbursement rate on mileage, so it would make sense to use their rates for meals, per diem's.
So, it's something we can look to increase or look to see what would be reasonable, okay?
And Mark, gee, when we were doing that so many years ago, Mark had made the suggestion of, um, or somebody made the suggestion that. We should just, if you got somebody going to a conference, you should just cut them a check for their per diem, and then it's up to them how they spend it. Now, that's how a lot of organizations do it, they would go travel to the hospital, that was.
You say whatever the max per diem is, just to get a grant.
I don't know about cities, that's what we know about cities.
Yeah. I don't know if they do, but you know, I.
I remember you saying, pay it, give it to them upfront.
Yeah.
I'd say, I have a problem with the fact, so you get fifty bucks and then they provide you lunch and they provide you dinner.
Well, there's a way to throw in the per diem depending on what meals are provided.
Right. Would you be for that?
How, how?
So on a Tuesday before? Okay. On a Tuesday before the meeting, starting on a Wednesday, I get supper. But I get fifty bucks for the day, cause I am allowed to eat that night.
No, but wouldn't if you'd only get a portion of that.
We call it per day, we don't say per meal.
And it.
Well, I know.
That's what you gotta be. So you'll give me my fifty dollars and I'll go go spend my seventeen ninety-eight on my two son's bacon eaters.
Uh, let me say, we would review it when we talk about it in the Personnel Board meeting.
Like just something to think about.
And I would be, yeah, strongly opposed to that.
Yeah, exactly.
It ought to be per meal. And if you're all day, it's fifty bucks, but if it's, if it's less than a full day, then it's per meal broke down with a certain formula.
Yeah, makes sense.
And you have to ask for a price down there, where you're traveling.
Yeah. Yeah. Ten, twenty, thirty, whatever, and.
Yeah, it's, and it's out here.
Maybe that's a little too much, isn't that sixty?
We used to have guys that would travel, at five o'clock, they'd stop and, and have dinner and then a half hour later they're home.
Yeah.
Seriously, and, and it happened a lot. Uh, how, how do they, how do they nor- how are our, our employees normally pay for their meals, when they're out, they use their own money? And we, they reimburse them, is that what happens?
Both ways, it's put on county credit card.
Right, credit card would be, in, in today's environment, most people have a credit card.
I'm sorry, do you have something to say?
Yeah.
The ones that travel do anyway, or have access to one, okay, this was Carney that I pulled up on this website, so actually the per diem lodging rate, one-ten. That's higher than I remembered it being a couple of months ago, actually. And meals, and incidentals, sixteen for breakfast, nineteen for lunch and twenty-eight for dinner, and this is in Carney. First day and last day of travel, fifty-one.
How much?
Fifty-one, the first, but, but yeah, like you said, I mean, Kelly, with her example, you're paying me to go there and you're, I, I eat dinner, I eat it.
Fifty-one.
This would say twenty-eight. I get twenty-eight dollars, but I only spend eighteen. Right, that's, it'd be, who's you to eat at Wendy's, cause you could go to Charlie's on the lake.
Right.
It's totally fair for us, isn't it? But, the city of Gearing did that because then you don't have to mess with receipts.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Or any of that, you just pay that money upfront.
Exactly.
And whatever you spend it on for meals, that's all you get, there's.
Yeah, if you, if you don't wanna have, if you wanna have a nice dinner, do you have a light breakfast, a light lunch and then spend the rest on a nice dinner or something like?
Exactly.
That's right.
Yes, I understand. But, right, I agree, and you, we pay for a reasonable dinner.
That's true.
Yeah.
And if you wanna go be extravagant, then more power to you, you're only getting twenty-eight bucks.
Well, I'm kind of an oddball, I, I'm eating on a taxpayer's dime, so when I travel, I, I pick. The cheapest, nice hotel I get and I eat like I would at home, cheap. Cause that's not my money, that's the taxpayer's money, so we need to be cognizant of that and be very economical and try to eat on the best deal we can.
And then.
And.
And you know, a lot, most people probably do, Mike, that, but there are a few that are going to.
Yeah, they do. Cause when I worked with the federal government, oh, we got per diem, and I made a ton of money off per diem because I would eat cheap, stay in real rightful places, and I made money. And we're not really in the business of making money, so.
But, but we're not gonna go broke at fifty bucks a day for meals either.
Well, it's kinda pricey.
And I think if you, if you give that employee an opportunity to pick and choose where they wanna go eat. If they, if they wanna eat McDonald's or they wanna sit down for a nice steak and eat it down, they have that prob- that, that choice to do that.
I'm gonna recommend that we, um, take action on these items in yellow and then throw it back at the Personnel Board. Let them do all the discussing and, I won't say cussing, just discussing. And try and re- recommend something.
Do you wanna table, you, you like, you like to table this dinner?
No, I'm saying we can pass this, we can pass this part.
You're taking the pass.
But they're bringing it back to, Ken, why don't you talk about some meals and what you're gonna handle that.
And then. And the per diem stuff can be dealt with.
And maybe. Changing off the fifty, if you follow the GSA, there it was, it was sixty-eight.
So. Right, we're, we're in a something fairly close.
But. Yeah, it is a sixty per day, but we can add cabots, if you got continental breakfast, you don't get the breakfast piece.
And.
Right.
If you got a lunch provided by the conference, you don't get the lunch piece.
Right, most of Kelly and I's conferences, all of our meals are.
Might be a little, right, so we'll need to address that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, how that, that per diem might work.
And then have five dollars for incidentals. Incidentals, as I think somebody for drinking the motel water, you know, they give you water and charge you four bucks a bottle.
I, back, when I was with the city, they, they would do that now that I think about it.
Yeah.
You'd get your registration, if it said breakfast or lunch was furnished, then that was taken into consideration when you got your stuff.
Yeah, I thought special event here, I did this.
Yeah.
So we need to request the registrations to be in- included with the.
Yeah.
And we need to, we, we ought to examine those two locations for sure, what they do. But let's try and, in an effort to keep moving, let's try and take action on this item. And then we'll throw that per diem stuff back at the Personnel Policy people and try and iron that.
I would move approval of the policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yassos.
Alright, motions carried, alright, we'll go to the last item, which is, uh, policy one-two-one-zero, no smoking in the bay.
There was no changes to the policy, but the commissioner sent it back to the Personnel Board to look at the maps. And determine where the smoking areas would be, not, cause I believe we asked you, where do you think they should be, and you asked us to pr- make the decision and bring it to you. Okay, now I gotta find my map, I thought I had it up there. Do you want me to walk around? Nope, nope, I've got it up there, I'm good. Okay, so, where we would put the smoking areas is the little green dots. The red dots are indicating the twenty-five feet from the doorway, so. Anyway, there is an air- this is the administration building. This is the north side of the administration building. And there is an area, if you go to the right, there is a fenced-in area that has part of the boiler, and it's got a fence around it. And there's a tree, uh, Jay was recommending, he could set up a little spot in this area, it would be blocked from the wind. And maybe put in a bench. And places for receptacle. Although Jay is pretty, he's not real keen on cleaning up cigarette butts, but that's, anyway, I think that's part of what, we could at least do that and put it back in this area.
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm, Kelly, where do you guys go for?
The other side, right here.
Oh, right in there, so, so that would be?
Under the other tree. This way, there's a, there's a table right here.
So that would be, you can't smoke it there now, that would be moved somewhere else.
People can use, the, and the discussion has been, the table is there. The people can sit and eat their lunch on a nice sunny day without smoke in their face, or when the smokers are out, so we move the smokers over here. So, anyway, that's spot number one, questions, you, you get me, okay? The other one, we're kind of bending a little bit, but this would be out, this outdoor. And this is where we exit the building or come in and come out, but you come around this little cove in here, and there's already a bench. Kinda hidden from and blocked, blocked by the wind, blocked from view for the most part, right in there. We're okay with that, and then coming over to the courthouse, all along the old jailhouse, across, across the alley. Anywhere in there. And employees exit out from this door, and then they can come over in this area.
Next to the old jail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what we're proposing. If, if you don't have any issues with us.
Well, I move that we approve the, uh, uh, Personnel Board's recommendation for smoking areas.
I'll second.
I think it accomplishes what we had all discussed the last time we were here and, um, along with the input from. The employees and I, I think, um, that we can s- again, start with it, um, the, uh.
Probation building, we were not concerned about, but.
Yeah, we're not declaring anything at the probation building, basically. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yassos.
Alright, motions carried. Alright, very good, that takes care of those personnel items, um. We do have on the agenda to receive the Personnel Director's Report. We did receive that in our packet. And, um, Lisa's intention there wasn't really to go through it and read it, but if, um, for us just to read it. It was supposed to be part of the consent agenda, but it didn't get put in that one. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
We can, yeah, hopefully you.
I, I read it.
You could make a motion to receive it, and then it's done.
As part of the, yeah, because we really didn't include it.
It should have been in the consent.
Right.
Well, I make a motion to receive the Personnel Director's Report.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
Ken.
I'm trying.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried. All right, we'll go to discuss and consider approval of service agreement with MAXIMUS. Kelly?
Five twenty-two, Kelly. Five twenty-two, Kelly.
Okay, you're familiar with MAXIMUS, and it helps get rates money back or special rates for child support and private district support. Huh?
It helps us with our federal grants.
Allison explained it for me in my emails by.
We've approved this.
Ever since I started.
Ever, ever since I began. It's.
Hi, Kevin?
We had some pretty, pretty tough questions about this four years ago. And we, we really dug into it to see what, what it was providing for us. And at the time, I was working at Capwen, um, and that organization is very heavily dependent on grants and. I don't remember the specifics of their, their, what I learned there is they were also, um, so they should have been.
The amount's fifty-two hundred, is that correct? What I'm reading?
Twenty-six, twenty.
Yes.
I will move approval of the service agreement with MAXIMUS. Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Let me just ask that one more time. It's fifty-two hundred per year.
Yes.
But it's for three years.
It's a three-year contract. They bill us twice a year, twenty-six hundred each.
But it's, this is a three-year contract. All right, just wanted to clarify. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses?
All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll go to old business, time clock plus and payroll. Maybe we got an update earlier, I don't know. Um, on time clock plus.
I don't, working on the integration, and I will tell you, I'm starting to get frustrated. It's a very slow process, and they aren't working very quickly for us, so.
You're talking about departments or?
No, the time clock plus organization trying to get us the information to wrap into the MIP software that we have, so. Well, there you go, huh? Is that what it's all about? But no, I don't know. I might go, I might be talking to MIPs and see how much their product is. I, I don't wanna change, but we're never, we just seem to be, for what seems to be a minute issue that I've been dealing with for the last four weeks and not getting there.
You're spinning your wheels almost.
Well, I'm not, I'm not doing anything other than we tested and it's not there.
Not used yet.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway.
Okay.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Any questions of that? If not, we'll go on to the, um, next item, which is public comments. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The Board will not take action on comments presented this date. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to say anything? Let the record show there were none. Um, we'll go on then to Board and Staff Reports. Hmm, Ms. Kelly will start.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Ms. Kelly doesn't have anything.
Let the record show.
Let the record show, I was called on first and didn't have anything this time.
Jean?
Um, that department, rather than one Friday, um, there are charities and, and Sarah Scott. Just to get some clarification of affiliation with our government. Law, which was passed last night, and I see her, crop work, I said, to her, trying to get this, so tweaking up the language. Trying to include all grant fees, not just purchases or services.
So is it gonna affect your office then substantially?
Yes. Um, not, not, uh, on a technical, but, uh, definitely, um. Frustration, um.
Just another layer of frustration there.
There's nobody from China buying off, it sounds like Norman, but I haven't seen people walk around with, you know, their cases whole English and. Not for a, so we're just wanting to tweak the language a little, uh, to make it easier to understand, and help and for us.
Okay, s- s- appreciate it. Kurt?
Uh, I have my four transactions that were two quarters ago, it's on the, so, but now it's not, so.
They got delivered here, you gotta go there.
Right, this one we have to get future deals, I'm going to price them.
Okay.
Did we do the next one?
Question?
I can't say it was weeks then, with like, and state control has to respect the, your taxes.
I've gotta go to Omaha on eighteenth of March, if you need to go.
Awesome.
Okay. Jason, do you have anything for us?
No.
Okay, Lisa.
Okay, um, well, Charlie might be mentioning this, but I'm gonna mention it first. Combined meeting with the tourism group, February twenty-fourth, can you make that work? I think Brenda's checked with the tourism committee and all but one can be there then. And I was, February twenty-fourth, probably four, four-thirty, and then what she, we told her.
Is that be your rate?
No.
Oh, I'm looking at Jane.
The third and the eighteenth. I meant to send you an email. I didn't do letter of text.
The fourth Monday of the.
February. Well, fine tuning that.
Yeah, four-thirty, four, four-thirty's fine.
I'd say, I was just wondering if you had an issue first, because I've been kinda disgusted, and she checked. Four-thirty? Okay. Okay, that was the first topic, so. And Kelly, it works for you?
Well, I hope so.
Okay, otherwise, we can run it back through if we wanna go into March, but.
So what, what time was it? Four-thirty?
We said four-thirty.
Okay.
If you'd rather be four.
No, I just, I'm just putting it on the phone. For some reason, I thought it was earlier in the day, but that's okay.
I don't remember ever.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And my other topic for you is I'm going through NERMA renewal right now, where we clarify, go look at all, everything we have listed for our vehicles and everything for our equipment and our properties, okay? And the Departments are coming through and saying, oh, this one we got, we, was in an accident and we don't use this anymore. NERMA doesn't take it off. I have to take it off. And, you know, just making sure we have the, the right items on the, on the equipment schedules, location schedules. I sent the location schedules to the airport, because they have a value associated with each of their different buildings. And they met with me today, and they think they're all very undervalued. So I'm supposed to be going back to NERMA to discuss the fact that they think their airport terminal is, has a value of fifteen million and maybe it should be more like twenty-five million. It's like. Well, because North Platte's building a terminal right now, so. Anyway, just interesting topic. You might be hearing more from us on that. And I had been told at the NERMA conference that they're go- they send, um, an, who, like an appraiser around, and the last time they were in town, I think it's a appraising firm from Florida, was twenty-seventeen. And they gave us a whole big manual of all of our properties that we insure and had a picture and, uh, all their identifying stuff. So they are talking and sending that group around again, I thought, this year. So finding out where we are on that schedule, and that might help clarify some of this too, but. And I sent you out information on our risk levels here a couple of weeks ago, too. So we did meet with our safety group. The safety meeting, Safety Committee met last week, and we talked a little bit about what the risk level meant and what we need to do to try to promote safer driving, staying out of accidents, so. Anyway, Steve's already taken some steps. Steve chaired for the Roads Department. And Kurt had, had some input on that and, and Sheriff wasn't involved at that point, or we didn't have a representation at this meeting, so we'll have to be talking to them, so.
Those are the, I mean, we have three or four departments that are high vehicle usage and then.
Mm-hmm.
Then a whole lot of departments with little or none.
Right. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Russ?
I reported on everything at the last meeting. My, my meetings are just starting tomorrow.
Mike?
Well, the twenty-third, I attended the Personnel Board meeting. Uh, twenty-fourth, I attended the Community Wide Cleanup Meeting. Uh, we have those meetings about every two weeks. Uh, and the twenty-ninth, I attended the County Elected Officials Meeting. Thirty-fifth, I missed the safety meetings. I was working for Marshals at times, I couldn't get there. Uh, coming up, I have a County Housing, uh, Board Meeting, uh, on the fourth this month. Uh, the fifth, sixth, and seventh, I'll be attending a training at Ricky One V Royal Health for peer support for first responders. And then the tenth, uh, the CERP, uh, three of us from CERP will be meeting with Selinda to discuss CERP operations, radios, and, and, uh, what all we do, so that she is aware of what we do. Because we, we go out of state, in-state, and, uh, few of us anyway. So we wanna better, uh, work with the nine-one-one center, what we do, and that's about it.
Okay. Um, the meeting with, uh, Robert and the Assessor.
Thank you, because I was like, I did have something to say.
Okay, when is that again?
Okay, he has invited us to be there, uh, on the eighteenth, which is going to be our regular meeting day.
Regular. At two.
At two.
Two o'clock.
To discuss the.
Tax protest.
The last year's protests and what make it better for this.
I, I visited with Scott about that. Star here, would you pick up on that?
I.
Talk to him.
Okay, I'll.
Um.
So all of you plan on being able to attend, is, was my question. I.
Yes.
So I can get my notice, right? I'm gonna call it a workshop, basically, to discuss the protest procedure or something like that before the meeting.
Okay.
Is that fair? Okay.
We just talked about the tourism meeting, February twenty-fourth at four-thirty, a regular meeting. Our regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February eighteenth.
Yes.
That's right after the tax protest meeting. And, um, so that's on a Tuesday, not a Monday. And then, uh, I mentioned that, um, I'm still, uh, hopefully, uh, going to be going to Carney to the, um, NACO, um, Board Chair Training. It's on the fourteenth. And so I still plan to go to that, trying to work out a couple of things in my schedule. But, um, those are the primary things that I have at this point. Ken?
Uh, all my meetings start next week. I, I attended the Officials' Meeting. There was, uh, actually quite a bit of discussion on the, on a possible new policy for the Personnel. On the, remind me what that was, this silent fiery and all that kinda stuff was brought.
Oh, quiet, quiet firing.
Quiet firing and that, I, I thought it was pretty interesting myself. I think it's something that hopefully they'll get to the Personnel Board and discuss to make it, uh, there's some really good points in there, I thought.
We talked about it at the Personnel.
I was gonna say, didn't he present at the Personnel?
Yeah, he, he did present at the.
Yeah. Yeah, I wa- I wasn't at that one. I was just at the Officials' Meeting when he, when he presented.
Officials, so we discussed it out there. I don't know what we would bring here, Ken. I would say, um, it's not like a policy.
It's not a policy?
I don't think it's policy worthy. It's just a, you know.
Be aware of it.
Be aware and.
Really?
Look for signs in your employees or that might be.
So it can be, yeah, and it can be both, uh.
Quiet quitting, quiet, quiet firing.
Yeah.
Quiet firing. Could be, could be both, could be on either side. And so, hey.
I think we had discussed possibly getting, um, some training on both of those and having more, in part, of.
But we didn't foresee it being put into any kind of a policy, is what we were talking about.
It would be, it'd be hard to.
Possible legal application. Yeah.
I say, you already got those in your policies already. I mean, you're, you got your EO, you got your human relations publishers that cover all that, so.
Yeah, recognizing, and I think is the issue.
It's not anything new. It's been around for years.
Okay. Um.
Anything else, Ken?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Um, so we had our NACO, uh, Bill Review last week, the week before, and it was, we had a, we had a follow-up Zoom meeting, uh, last week. And, uh, looking at some things. So there is a bill in the legislature right now to look at increasing the nameplate capacity tax for renewable energy by fifty percent, um, which would basically get it to be in line with inflation. Currently, the nameplate capacity tax is thirty thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, but that has not changed since the inception of the nameplate capacity tax in two thousand and seven. The new, uh, capacity tax, we don't add fifty percent to that, that gets us to that five thousand on the mark, five, five thousand plus, so, um, and that basically gets us to, to that inflationary number, so. Um, that's a positive, but the caveat to that bill is that if we were to, um, we would only get to realize that if the county became a, an American energy county, which is kinda like the, is very similar to being a, um, cattle-friendly county where you have to make concessions to the developers and that we would no longer control the zoning. Um, and one of those, uh, caveats is that we could have no special, uh, decommissioning, uh, caveats in, in the, in the deal. So it's, it's kind of a catch twenty-two there. Um, you know, you, you get to realize the increased revenue, um, which is substantial, but then you lose your, your ability to, to ask for, um, you know, strong decommissioning. you know, strong decommissioning rules. Uh, so it'd be interesting to watch and see how that's negotiated, to see if there's any changes to that, um. The NACO is putting a conditional support on a bill for, um, to eliminate the inheritance tax, uh, uh, in good faith, we'd ask that the, there's replacement revenue, uh, realized if, if the inheritance tax is eliminated, um, those are the two major bills that I'm interested in. Um, I think the other, the other bills, you know, affect the various offices, um, or so, the, the just the Board Commissioner, so that's interesting, um, Brenda is going to be at a sports panel discussion in Lincoln at, uh, the Sports Nebraska meeting down there. There is a, there is an interesting, uh, attention grabber for, for one of the topics that's gonna be discussed there. Um, one of, one of the panels is gonna, is called Scoring with Sports Tourism. It says Hotels and Attractions Want In on This Important Project. That is, um, that's to say that, that, um, hotels across the state, hotels across, hotel owners across the country are, are just salivating at the idea of, of, um, increasing sports tourism, um, and there's, there's good reason for that, so, um, that'll be interesting to see, um, what she comes back with in terms of new knowledge and, and, uh, perspectives on sports tourism, um. Are you able to go on that, right, it's this weekend, I was out at the office all last week, so. Not able to go, I would've liked to have gone, but, um, I just didn't align with. I only have to go down at the day job, um, but then the other meetings will be coming up, so.
Anything else from anybody? Nothing else on the agenda, meetings adjourned.
Not bad, an hour and fourteen minutes.
Yeah, haven't done that for a while.
That is a new record, almost put it there.
Yeah.
You were close. You were really, really good.